Well, good evening, everybody. As you can see, we have adjusted our meetings to be in full recognition of the COVID increases that we've had over the last couple of weeks here now. Just so everybody understands, myself and several staff are in the room. All our other participants are being socially distanced at another location, either their homes or other locations. So we're doing what we can to reduce the spread, and we urge everyone to also do so. Let me gavel this into session, and we can do our flag salute. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please, if you could call the roll.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Potem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Angler.
Here. I don't believe we have any requests for continuances, and we do not have any special presentations today because of our distancing. So with that, I would call for any public comments that we might have. Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Three individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Rhonda Guthrie. Rhonda, are you there?
I am here. Good evening, Mayor Angler and members of the city council. My name is Rhonda Guthrie, and I am the Vice President of Government Affairs for Athens Services. I'd like to begin by saying what a privilege it is for our family-owned business to be providing waste and recycling collection services along with street sweeping to the city of Thousand Oaks. We are dedicated to being a first-rate service provider and an excellent community partner. We believe our company-wide commitment to environmental sustainability aligns very closely with the goals and values of Thousand Oaks. We wanted to provide you with a brief progress report on our first week of service. We have made good progress transitioning service to the 38,000 homes and 1,200 commercial customers in Thousand Oaks. We have dedicated over 100 of our best and most experienced team members and nearly 50 of the most environmentally friendly vehicles to service the city. I'd like to share some numbers to show our progress since beginning service at the start of the month. We've made a total of 163,303 pickups during the first week with a 99.6% service reliability rate. This includes 19,306 commercial pickups, 125 rolloff pickups, and 143,872 residential pickups. Our street sweepers have now swept the entire city successfully, and 99% of any issues reported to us were resolved within 24 hours. As you can imagine, this has been a complex undertaking, especially coming right after major storms in the holiday season. The transition has included the new organics collection program, deploying all-new carts and bins, and changing service days. While we recognize these changes may require some adjustment by residents and businesses, the long-term benefits will greatly help our community and environmental goals. We remain focused on being flexible to meet the needs of our customers. Looking ahead, all customers will now be picked up on their regularly scheduled day once a week. We began container deployment this week, where we will be delivering new Athens containers and removing the old ones. This will be happening through March, and all customers will receive a letter a week in advance telling them when to expect new carts, which will take place the day before the regular service day, along with a letter with further instructions. Customers should continue using current carts until they are replaced with new Athens carts. And once the new carts arrive, they should place the old carts out on their scheduled service day. Whether they are full or empty, we will remove them within 48 hours of being serviced. All of this information and more is available on our Thousand Oaks website, athensthousandoaks.com. Customers can also call our local customer service member or visit our Sustainability Center on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Again, we are honored to be serving the city of Thousand Oaks and look forward to being a reliable and generous partner to this wonderful community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Our second speaker is James Scott. Mr. Scott.
I just, I said this morning, good evening, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Starting my video now. My, for this evening, the one topic that I wanted to just mention to the city council, I know that we have many things in Thousand Oaks that we're working on, but for the consideration of the panel and the city council specifically, is the use of aftermarket mufflers within the city. I was doing a study this afternoon on some of the government regulations as regards to FAA and other agencies who take sound disturbances extremely seriously. They're working diligently to lower our airport sounds. And unfortunately, I've noticed an elevation of the dust level for these aftermarket devices. So I just simply wanted to bring this to the council's attention, mention it as a concern, and I'll cede my time from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Our third speaker tonight is Adam Haverstock. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Angler and members of the city council. My name is Adam Haverstock, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, here with our monthly chamber report. First, I wanted to mention Canejo Valley Restaurant Week, which is coming up on February 18th through 27th. Restaurant Week diners will get great deals on existing menu items or special Restaurant Week-only dishes. We are currently signing up restaurants in Thousand Oaks and Agora Hills to participate. And more information is available at the Visit Canejo Valley website, canejo.com, and just click on the Restaurant Week tab for more information. Our Chamber of Commerce is going to be distributing free masks to business owners. In order to help prevent the spread of the Omicron variant, the State of California Office of Emergency Services is distributing millions of high-quality masks and sanitizer to businesses through their local Chamber of Commerce. Our Chamber of Commerce has placed an order for masks and sanitizer to distribute to local Canejo Valley businesses, and business owners can contact the Chamber of Commerce to get their share of free masks and sanitizer. We have, the Chamber is offering 2022 labor law compliance materials through our partnership with California Chamber of Commerce. These include new hire packets and the posters with all the mandatory labor law disclosures that you normally see up in the break room. These materials are guaranteed to be accurate by California Chamber of Commerce and guaranteed to be up to date with the new 2022 laws. And posters and pamphlets can be purchased on our website at canejochamber.org. And then finally, I wanted to mention that in the month of January, we are taking all of our programming virtual. In order to do our part to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 Omicron variant, all chamber programming for the month of January has been moved to a virtual format. Networking groups, policy committees, board meetings, and events have all been converted, but our offices do remain open to the public, and we do allow walk-ins. For more information, please visit our chamber website, canejochamber.org. Thank you very much. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Haverstock. Our next, do we have any last-minute people for our public comments?
We do not.
Very good. Let's then move on to our consent calendar. We do have...
Mayor Angler, if I might, I'd just add a couple of points to add based on public comments.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Thank you. Apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to make sure to build on the initial comments from Athens Services. Obviously, the city's been heavily engaged in the last week in working on the transition of waste hauler service. It's been a top priority of city council after the decision was made earlier last year to shift to a new hauler. As you heard with those numbers, it's a pretty daunting undertaking with a lot of complexity in a city as large as ours. Given that, there was obviously some hiccups last week, some bumps, as you would expect with the transition of this magnitude, but I can say with confidence that Athens has done a great job in responding to those items that have been brought to their attention, and I think we're on a good path as we move into the week here. It's only been one week. We appreciate the public's patience and grace as we move through this transition. And as a reminder, this, the switch is made by the city council when folks begin opening their residential trash bills. We'll see a reduction in the rate that they were paying previously. And so that, on top of the fact that there will be some additional services provided as part of this contract. So I just wanted to remind folks, if you have questions, you have a city team here. Athens has a customer service team standing by to assist, so please do not hesitate to contact them. Also, since Mr. Haverstock mentioned in his comment regarding COVID, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to mention that Thousand Oaks City Hall, while we are participating in virtual meetings, Thousand Oaks City Hall does remain open. We have some health and safety, additional health and safety measures in place, but we've kept our counters open to process those items of business for the public at large. So feel free to utilize that. We have been able to remain open and have a great deal of appreciation to our city team that continues to work so hard through these up-and-down circumstances to deliver service to our residents. In regards to COVID, just so the council and the community knows, we've, since Christmas, essentially, we've had about 42 of our employees test positive for COVID, consistent with what you're seeing kind of across the county. We're tracking it very closely through our Human Resources Department and working very closely with our employees to make sure that we're taking the very best care we can of our team. But there are impacts associated with it we've been able to manage right now, and that's through dedication of a lot of folks that even continue to work in a remote setting in some senses. You might pick up a hint of hoarseness in my voice. I am recovering from a cold after multiple COVID tests myself, so it's a sign of the times here, but I just wanted to update the council and the community that we continue to work very, very hard to deliver services and have a great deal of appreciation for our team that gets up every day trying to deliver the best service for the city, residents, and businesses in Thousand Oaks. Thanks so much, Mayor Angler.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I see some of my colleagues would like to say something. Mr. Adams, you were first up.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as we all know, the state of California is now requiring that we put our organic waste into the green waste barrels to, so it doesn't end up in landfills and create methane gas, pardon me, which adds to the greenhouse gas problem. It's probably a little early in the process, but I'd be appreciative if Athens might get back to us in a little while and kind of give us a report on are the residents complying with this? What is the reaction? Are we starting to see organics in with the green waste barrel? I know we've started that here at my home, and I'd be curious to see what the overall response is in the city.
Sure. So our plan, just for the council, with the transition of this magnitude, we want to get a few months of data in place, and our focus is going to be when it come around to goal-setting later this spring. Since this was a council top priority, we'll be writing a comprehensive update, and we'll have Athens representatives to assist us at that time as well. We do have information on that for anyone that does have questions up on our website, and Athens does as well. It's a huge transition. It's happening in every jurisdiction in California right now, so as a reminder to everyone, this isn't just an Athens transition change. This is a statewide new regulation that's in effect, and so every jurisdiction is facing this, and there's going to be, just like there was when recycling came into the fold, there's going to be a lot of learning curve as we move ahead.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember McNamie, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Angler. Question for the city manager, Drew Powers. Mr. Powers, James Scott brought up the interesting question regarding the aftermarket mufflers and the volume and the levels. Is that something that is a city concern, a county concern, or is that at the state level to look into this and address it if it is a problem? Which direction should he go?
I'll have our police chief follow up with Mr. Scott directly. Obviously, there are regulations, law enforcement-related regulations with noise emitting from mufflers, so that would be something to be best followed up for by him. We have his information through the public speaking channels, and I will have him follow up directly.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña. Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Yes, good evening and Happy New Year. I was wondering about one item that came up constantly during the transition this first week with Athens, namely, is Athens or the city really going to charge residents the $25 fine if the lids are not closed? This is the trending topic on local social media, of course, Nextdoor. And I believe that we still have Ms. Guthrie with us. Perhaps she can answer that, or one of our staff members?
Yeah, I'll be careful because I don't want to get too far in, since we're not agendized on it, but I will say that, you know, it's been a lot of discussion on that, that particular topic. It's a common regulation. It's out there for most haulers because it deals with keeping things from blowing out of containers. I believe Waste Management had a similar charge as well. But Ms. Guthrie, if you have a very brief response to that, we can do that, otherwise we can follow up.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, Councilmember Bill De La Peña. I think city manager covered it well, but our intent is not to charge people any extra fees whatsoever. Our intent is to educate folks about what goes where. The new organics program, our intent is to make sure that they're what we call right-sized, have the right-sized containers for their home or business, and we will work with customers to ensure that happens before we would ever get to any sort of fine or penalty situation.
Thank you. That was my understanding as well. And if anybody's out there hearing this and listening to this council meeting, I hope that you heard that these fines will not be imposed. It is a last resort. And then a second was the COVID issue. I've seen bank branches closing in Thousand Oaks, any employment places from banks to restaurants to offices because of the Omicron outbreak. And it is having an impact on people's lives. It has having an impact on the economy, and there is absolutely no doubt that most of the people in our local hospitals right now are not vaccinated. And I hope that this stark impression that we are now getting from the impact on people's lives and local businesses, perhaps that will trigger people to overcome their fear, their hesitation, perhaps dismiss conspiracy theories, and get the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I think I just want to say a couple of things on our trash. The waste hauler contracted now is in effect. I would agree that the waste hauler has had one week of service now and has been able to address some of the things that have come up. The many emails and phone calls I received, I forwarded them to Waste Management for, I'm sorry, Athens for rectification on it, and they were able to contact most of the people that I referred quickly and were able to handle the problems. I think with the size of what was going on now, and I would agree with the city manager, with the size of the contract that was going into effect, it's very important that we give Athens a chance to get the job done. As I said, we are now at the seventh day, and hopefully by the end of this week, many of the issues will have been resolved. That is not to say that we won't expect that they give us a high level of service, and we will demand that from them. But at this point, I think that they have been responsive and have tried to address any issue that have come up. So in my opinion, let's see how they do, and we will follow up with them as needed. Very good. Let's go to our consent calendar then. Does, do any of my colleagues have any items to pull? Any discussion? Very good. I'll entertain a motion if anyone would like to make a motion.
Move the consent calendar.
Very good. Moved by Councilmember Adam. Madam Clerk, if we can do a roll call.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Hi.
And Mayor Angler?
Yes.
And Mayor, that motion carries 5-0, and I do have some ordinance titles to read into the record.
Very good.
An ordinance approving Development Agreement 1872, Newbury Road, Applicant Daylight T.O. LLC, ordinance number 1693 NS, an ordinance adjusting and setting rates and fees of City Water Division Uncodified, ordinance number 1694 NS, and an ordinance adjusting and setting rates, fees, and discharge limits of City Wastewater Division Uncodified, ordinance number 1695 NS.
Very good. We do not have any public hearings or study sessions scheduled for tonight, so why don't we go straight to our department reports and start with Mr. Mead?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts Board of Directors, it's my pleasure to present our report covering our operations for the last six months ending December 31st. Tonight, I'll provide you with a brief overview of some of the highlights contained in our report. First of all, my staff and director, John Bradley, have been re-elected for an additional three-year term. We also have met with DEI facilitators from Equity Practices Group over the course of four workshops with EBG. They worked with our board to develop a common language around diversity and inclusion, identify obstacles and solutions, discuss ways in which to create a culture of inclusion, and help with skill-building for difficult conversations. Equity Practices will help the board to weave DEI into the strategic plan at our upcoming retreat next month. As far as finance, we adopted a 2021-2022 fiscal year operating budget of $953,346, which does not include expenditures for TORs presents and concessions. We approved $50,000 to be spent on grants to local elementary schools for arts education through Access Arts, and we'll get to this a little bit later. And we also approved an additional $125,000 to be spent on local nonprofit performing arts groups through the Raymond M. Olson Performance Grants. New this year, the grants are available between July and March with no set deadline. As far as marketing, we continue to invest in marketing to improve brand recognition both for the fundraising as well as for the programming sides. In this last year, we contracted with, since we contracted with Consortium Media and marketing, we have seen a steady uptick in followers on both Instagram and Facebook, as well as increased online donations, interest in our virtual field trips, and better brand recognition. TO Arts has also invested in social media marketing for our three resident companies. More on that in a moment. As to development side, TO Arts continues to be grateful for the generosity of our donors. Recurring gifts both monthly and annually are the Life Letter Fund Development, and the roster of both these membership groups continue to grow, providing vital sustaining dollars that we can count on month after month and year after year. This past December, TO Arts welcomed our youngest audience circle member, a 10-year-old elementary student who's allocated $7 per month from his allowance to us. Every dollar obviously truly makes a difference. TO Arts presented an outdoor concert series, made possible thanks to the generosity of our donors and sponsors who embrace the idea of concerts and outdoor venues in our community. We continue to be a sponsor of Calhoun University Center for Nonprofit Leadership Celebration of the Sector event each year. New this year, TO Arts has joined the Greater Canejo Valley Chamber's Chairman Circle and was a sponsor of the State of the City Address last December. The executive director served as the emcee for the Chamber Gala, where Mr. Powers was honored as the man of the year. Congratulations again, Drew. The associate director has been elected to serve on the Chamber's Board of Directors effective January 2022. Now, with regard to Access Arts, this year, Access Arts, which has a vision to support high-quality sequential arts education for all elementary schools in Ventura County and the Greater Canejo Valley, has earmarked $50,000 to be spent for grants to elementary schools for arts in their curriculum. To date, we have funded $20,600 spent on a variety of different programs, from a capital improvement project where a computer lab was converted to a dance studio, to art supplies and artists in the classroom residencies. Both executive and associate directors have been invited to sit in on the strategic plan initiated by VAPA Coordinator Brian Peter to develop a three-to-five-year strategy for arts in the CV USD. Now, with regard to virtual field trips, another exciting part of our arts education program is virtual field trips. As some of you may know, we have virtual field trips, and a survey of teachers have indicated that they have wished for virtual field trips to continue even though they were back in classrooms. With no in-person field trips being allowed due to the pandemic, virtual field trips is one of the only ways students can be exposed to arts programming. Well over 2,500 students have accessed the various virtual arts offerings thus far. TO Arts has been using virtual field trips as an opportunity for diverse performers to our local students. This year so far, we have presented CWAM, American Indian Dance, Ballet Folklorica de Amalia Hernández de Mexico, hopefully I did that right, Pacific Festival Ballets, The Nutcracker. And this month, we are presenting Martin's Dream in honor of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, as well as an artist showcase of disabled artists from around the world. Now, with regard to programming and TO Arts Presents, TO Arts Presents, as you know, is a presenting partner of the Bank of America Performing Arts Center, and so far has presented 22 performances at the Share Forum, the Cavali Theater, and the Stagecoach Museum and Inn. TO Arts After Dark at Stagecoach is a new series of outdoor concerts that gave us the opportunity to present diverse artists to our community with a desire to diversify our audiences. TO Arts was grateful to have been given the opportunity to administer the City of Thousand Oaks Emergency Arts and Culture Grant. We received 19 applications for a total request of $675,000. Of these, 17 applicants were granted funding totaled the entire $500,000 that had been allocated by the city. Upcoming, our Strategic Board Tiny Retreat is scheduled for February to help chart the course of the next three to five years for TO Arts, and this will include a focus on establishing goals and identifying key steps to further the DEI work we undertook earlier this fiscal year. There are 33 remaining confirmed TO Arts Presents events for the 2021-2022 season, and we continue to add more throughout the year. Next month, we expect to host our donor gratitude reception in the Share Forum Theater. The work continues to engage our donors, our patrons, and even our artists. The annual state of the performing arts events will be held in June, and we look forward to partnering with the City of Thousand Oaks on the annual pop-up Artist and Musical Festival as a sponsor of diverse programming. Now, with regard to upcoming performances, I'd like to give you a few that are going to be occurring soon. Tomorrow evening, we have REO Speedwagon taking the stage in the Cavali Theater. On January 28th, we have the start of our National Geographic Speaker Series kicking off with the venture Keith Litzinski. And then we have Edwin McCain, who will perform the Share Forum on February 17th. So on behalf of TO Arts Board and staff, and the millions of patrons whose lives have been enriched by attending performances at the Bank of America Performing Arts Center, thank you for your continued support of our efforts and activities. This completes my report, and we have our executive director, Jonathan Soret, associate director, Nikki Bridgerson, and I are available to answer the questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mead, and thank you and your board for all the valuable work you're doing for TO Arts and getting the arts into our community. I'm going to ask if my council colleagues have any questions, and I see that Ms. Bill De La Peña has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Angler. I wanted to thank the TO Arts for your presentation, but even more than that, I am so appreciative of what you are doing for our community. We've had a lot of conflict in our community for quite some time, and one of the best ways to bridge the gap and to gain broader and greater understanding of our varied views and perspectives in life is to entertain the arts. The arts bring us together, no matter what our backgrounds are, no matter what our political affiliation is, and TO Arts is a huge contributor to bridging that gap, and for that, I really appreciate your presentation, everything that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your kind words. We are just trying to keep everyone surviving mentally through this pandemic. We're, if you don't realize, we're now heading into year three of this pandemic, and I think the arts are going to play an important role going forward in helping people to stay sane out there.
Councilmember Adam, do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a thought, I mean, there's no question that our theaters have been under duress over the last couple of years, as have theaters all across Southern California, but we have persevered, and we will continue to persevere. Our theaters will go on forever, as far as I'm concerned. Looking at longer term, theaters need patrons. They need patrons, and I'm happy to say that I think we will have a significant patronage base as the renaissance of Thousand Oaks Boulevard continues. As we all know, 1710 has been finished. It's right down the street from the theaters. The 299 project is close to being finished, which will bring some residents to the Boulevard. We have a project in the Lakes parking lot that's online for the next couple of years, and we're going to be working on a campus master plan to develop the front of the Civic Arts Plaza with the Public Square and amenities. They're all going to be a benefit, I think, in the long run of the theaters and the patronage to make them the center of our art scene, not that they aren't already, but to really enhance that. So I think those are some developments that are going to be very significant for the life of our theaters.
Yeah, definitely, though those downtown area locations are going to add more residents who are going to obviously have an interest, hopefully, in the arts and be willing to come see shows. And, you know, our executive director, Jonathan, and assistant director, Nikki, are doing everything they can do to ensure that our theater is running great and our TO Arts is running great, and we're going to do everything we can do to make sure the arts survive and thrive and everything.
Very good. And again, thank you, Mr. Mead, and all your group for a job well done. I really appreciate the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives that you're taking, the Folklorico and the different outreaches that you're doing, and thank you for that. We do have one public speaker on this topic. I have Amar Patel. Amar, are you out there? It seems that perhaps we've lost Amar. If we can get him to come back, that'd be great. If not, we will move on to our, you know, we do need a motion to accept the recommendations and receive them from TO Arts.
Move to approve. This is for Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Councilmember Bill De La Peña. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have Amar in now. Amar, are you online? Amar, if you're there. You might, I see on my panel here, I'm showing you're muted. If you can unmute yourself, that'd be great. Amar, we'll have to continue on with our motion now. If you can come on, we'll let you speak later, if that's possible. But right now, we do have a motion to receive and- But right now, we do have a motion to receive and the report.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good, we have another department report. This is 10B. We have Carlos Contreras, Kelvin Parker, Stephen Kearns, and Kari Finley from the Planning Department to help with that. So I will turn it over to Carlos.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. The project before you tonight is a request to initiate a height overlay zone change and concurrent processing of entitlements for a contemplated hotel building concept located at 33 West Hillcrest Drive. The request before you tonight consists of the following. Initiate the zone change for a height overlay to accommodate a hotel concept at the Jazz Marketplace Commercial Shopping Center and authorize simultaneous processing of entitlements, that is, processing of the zone change and development permit requests. Here's an aerial photograph of the subject property. In the red, I identified the subject site for the proposed overlay. In the black dashed line is the entire shopping center. As this aerial photograph demonstrates, we have Moore Park Road to the east. To the south, you have Hillcrest Drive and beyond that existing commercial uses and buildings, and you have the 101 freeway. To the west, you have Wilbur Road and existing development consists of industrial and multifamily development. With regards to the initiation process, concurrent processing of entitlements requires authorization by the city council. The development permit, which is the entitlement, has not been submitted by the applicant team because the city cannot process the request without either having a height overlay designation on the site or authorization to initiate concurrent processing by the council. It should be noted that tonight's action is not approving the height overlay or hotel concept, just allowing the applicant to proceed with the processing of the zone change and development permit application for further review and evaluation by the city. Also, this action does not guarantee the project will be approved during the formal review process as the project will be further evaluated and considered by the Planning Commission and City Council. Concurrent processing of entitlements will provide the Planning Commission and City Council the opportunity to preliminarily review the hotel concept height overlay prior to deciding whether to allow an increase in height at the subject site. If the city council authorizes concurrent processing tonight, the applicant will then submit the development permit and go through the formal planning review process, and the concept will get further refined to meet city development standards, codes, and policies. As previously mentioned, there is no guarantee that the zone change will be subsequently approved. As such, the applicant has submitted a letter acknowledging that they are aware of the potential risks involved with expenditures to prepare plans for a development application that is contingent upon the zone change being approved at a later date. Therefore, since a development permit involves the submittal of fees and preparation of various project plans, the applicant only intends to proceed with the hotel concept at the subject site only if the formal application can be processed concurrently. There have been height overlays previously reviewed and approved on the subject property. In March of 1994, the city council approved the zone change within portions of that Jazz Marketplace Shopping Center from C3, which is Community Shopping Center, to C3H, which is Community Shopping Center with the height overlay. The height overlay accommodated the construction of a major tenant building and movie theater building at two specific locations within the shopping center. Similar to the request before you tonight, the height overlay in 1994 was not for the entire shopping center, but rather for two isolated portions of the site. Here is a map demonstrating the two overlays at the subject property. Again, in the black dashed line, I identify the perimeter of the shopping center. The two green locations are the two height overlays that were previously approved in 1994. I identify in the red the project site, which sits in between these two height overlays. The height overlay identified in green, number one, is for the previously existing Burlington Coat Factory. Although the height overlay was approved for a height up to 75 feet, the construction ended up being at 44 feet in height. And then to the south, you have the Man Movie Theater with a building height of 38 feet. The height limit overlays are subzone categories, which are attached to the underlying zone specifically to accommodate additional building height in areas deemed appropriate by the city council. The concept tonight, as was the case in 1994, would apply a height overlay within the C3 zone from C3 to C3H, which is for the height overlay. As previously mentioned, the height overlay can be applied to the entire site or to a specific geographic portion of the property, as is the case for the request before you tonight. Should the council authorize the initiation of the zone change and allow for concurrent processing, this C3 height overlay category would allow the applicant to file an application for consideration of a building height of up to 75 feet. Here are the hotel concept details. The subject site totals 1.25 acres. The subject property is a developed site consisting of an existing commercial shopping center, which is commonly known as Jazz Marketplace. The concept consists of a new hotel and retail building consisting of 216 rooms, approximately 13,000 square feet of commercial retail space at the first floor, including an interior courtyard, swimming pool, and public exterior gathering places. Parking for the concept will ultimately be based on a comprehensive parking supply and demand analysis, which would only occur through the formal development review process. That is, should the city council grant the concurrent processing tonight. Here's a photograph of the subject property, subject site. This is looking at it from the interior access road, looking towards the southwest. As you can see on the left-hand side, you have Bucan de Beppo, and I believe Sharkies is on the right-hand side. That's the interior plaza. In the red arrow, I indicate the proposed location of the hotel building concept. As far as the concept plan, the contemplated hotel is centrally located within the Jazz Marketplace Shopping Center. Access is shown, or access to the subject's property is shown in the green and is provided to the west and to the east of the subject site. There are existing retail uses surrounding the contemplated hotel, which are identified in the purple, and existing parking structure located to the west identified in the orange. The hotel is identified in the red with 13,000 square feet of commercial retail within the northern portion of the first floor, which is identified in blue. And based on, you know, site investigation, existing development, and site characteristics, it appears that, you know, a proposed hotel concept building exceeding 35 feet in height may be offset by the adjacent surrounding buildings. As far as the next steps go, if the city council approves the request tonight, the applicant will then submit the development permit application. They will revise the project plans and proceed with the formal review process. Staff would like to note that through the formal review process, other city departments and city agencies will be required to review the concept and provide recommendations, conditions, and ultimately an approval. The formal application would then require review and approval by both the Planning Commission and the city council. And as I mentioned earlier, the city council will have the final decision-making authority over the entire project since the request involves a zone change, which is a legislative action. Therefore, staff recommended the city council adopt the resolution initiating the zone change and authorize concurrent processing of entitlements. That concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras. I do have a couple of my colleagues have their hands up. Ms. Bill de la Peña?
Thank you, Mayor Engler. The question I have is, you mentioned that there were two other or are two other locations with a height overlay zone approved in 1994. Where are the resolutions that state that it was up to 75 feet? I did not see them in the staff report.
Staff did not include the resolutions of those previous approvals based on staff's research on the previous approval in 1994 and also the zoning code allowing for building heights up to 75 feet. That is what the ultimate resolutions that were adopted allowed. However, they came in and when they provided their development building plans, they didn't necessarily need the 75 feet and constructed the buildings at 38 and 44 feet respectively.
If I may add to that, really, the previous two height overlays onsite were just added as points of reference just to provide some context to the actual item being considered tonight, which is the height overlay at this particular location.
Yes, okay, I was just looking for evidence that it was 75 feet. I hadn't seen that. The other question that I have is, or statement that I would like to make, is that the applicant has stated that they need 75 feet. So this is not an application where they say, oh, we will come in lower. They did say they needed that, correct, Mr. Contreras?
Based on the concept plans, yes, the applicant did state that they would like to receive an initiation to go up to 75 feet. However, we don't have the, since there is no formal development application, there is no specific detailed plan indicating that the height will be ultimately up to 75 feet. But that's the request before tonight is up to 75 feet.
And if I may add to that as well, just to clarify, with height overlays, as they're defined in the zoning code, the zoning code for height overlay allows a maximum of up to 75 feet. That's how it's characterized, and that's why it's phrased that particular way in the staff report. Obviously, more detailed information would come forward in relation to the proposed project onsite if council were to allow the height overlay to proceed. And again, this is just for the initiation of that height overlay in this location.
Thank you. I think it would be fair to state that most of these types of applications that come before the council, most of them really, I would say over 90%, when they are approved at this preliminary level, that's the way it goes. They will be approved in the end. My other question is that we had considered this particular area, namely the Jazz Mall, for mixed-use low. And I'm wondering, and this is probably more from Mr. Parker, this is a question I asked previously. Where could potentially these other apartments that we so desperately need, in particular workforce housing, where could they potentially go? I know this is not part of tonight's discussion, but we already looked at the general plan, and we already stated what we would like to see, and we need to meet our RAN numbers. And the Jazz Mall was one of those areas we were hoping to fulfill the need in the workforce, lower-income housing area.
And for this particular site, the opportunity to do that still exists? Staff perceived potential residential going into the parking lot areas that are currently undesignated. It wouldn't change the actual retail that's there onsite, but as many of us who have been to Jazz Marketplace will notice, there's a sea of parking in the parking lot, which is a key indicator in underutilization of parcel. So for purposes of the housing element and the general plan preferred map, that's the location where residential, if it comes in the future, would ideally be located.
And if I might add, I believe representatives from the Mark Merrill are here as part of the applicant team, so that might be a good question to pose to them.
Thank you so much. That's it. Thank you, Mayor Engler.
Very good, and Councilmember McNamie, your hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Contreras, a very nice presentation. Thank you. What is the height of the adjacent parking structure across the, I guess, breezeway or road between the parking lot and the parking structure in that building as proposed?
Yes, the building, sorry, the parking structure height is at 48 feet based on the approved plans that I see.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamie. Councilmember Jones, your hand is up.
The fact that we vote to allow this 75 feet, we still have discretion, don't we? At the time that we may have a submittal of this, am I being heard?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
It's headed across the screen.
Yes, Councilmember Jones, as I mentioned in the presentation that if the council does grant the initiation tonight, the applicant would submit the development permit that would move along with the zone change application, and it would go through the formal review process. It would be reviewed by the city departments and agencies. Planning Commission would provide an ultimate review and recommendation to the council, and then council will be the final reviewing authority.
Okay, well, I understand the need to change uses on a lot of areas in our city that depend on retail because of people buying online. You know, and therefore to have a profit-making enterprise at a large area such as the Jazz Mall that they may need to diversify. So I have no problem with the hotel. I presume they will do studies to see if the hotel is something that there's a need for. But I just wanted to make sure that if this does come back and they're not in the tentative stages anymore, that we do have the, still have the discretion on the height of the building. That was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Do any of my other colleagues have other questions for staff? Very good, I have just a couple of quick questions, I think. The height overlay is being asked for 75 foot. My recollection of the staff report is that they were considering a five-story hotel, which is typically less than 75 foot. Is 75 feet a typical number that is used for height overlay? Or is this set specifically at the request of the applicant?
So if I may begin on that particular answer, in the zoning code, anything that exceeds 35 feet can be considered for a height overlay. And the language in the code allows for height overlays for a maximum of up to 75 feet. As we saw from Carlos's presentation, not every building builds to that level. For instance, the Burlington Coat Factory, which is also located onsite, built to a height of 44 feet. But the height overlay in that particular area also allows up to 75 feet. So it will vary by particular project, and when the applicant has a moment to speak, he can actually address what they have planned for that particular site. But a height overlay is specifically defined in the zoning code of up to 75 feet.
And is this proposal in keeping with what our general plan was? And I think Councilmember Bill de la Peña alluded to it. Is it keeping with somewhat of our general plan for that area?
But that is correct. And we also have Kari Finley from our general plan team here this evening, who can reiterate on that further. But as council discussed it in the preferred land use map, the idea was to include policies that allow height overlays to continue at strategic locations throughout the city. And being that there's existing height overlays on this particular parcel, that was part of the conversation that came up that night specifically.
And I'm trying to keep my questions to three. There's, what other structures in the area are of similar height? In other words, is this going to be the highest building around? Or is there other structures in the area that are similar to this in height?
There are other structures in the area that match this particular height. For instance, the former ExxonMobil building has a height of 72 feet roughly. The Burlington Coat Factory onsite goes up to 44 feet. The parking structure for the mall is roughly in that 50-feet range, perhaps a slightly higher. So there's really a mix of building heights in that particular area. And for this particular location, it's centrally located towards the center of a parcel, receiving screening by both the parking structure, some of the other structures onsite. And as Mr. Contreras mentioned- mentioned, it's a couple of hundred feet located away from Moore Park Boulevard, so that'll also go towards masking any potential height for the structure in this location.
Thank you very much, any other questions from my colleagues? Very good, well, let's um, see if we have any speakers on this, uh, we do have some speakers, we have, uh, I believe this is the applicant, Sandy Segal, is Sandy on the uh, on the line?
Sandy is here, can you, can you hear me?
Very good, Sandy, go ahead.
Yeah, well, thank, first of all, thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council, and our very hardworking and dedicated staff, um, yeah, and I appreciate you making the time to hear us on this, and I thought, the value I could add is I think I could share, as someone who's been involved with Janes Marketplace um, for over twenty years now, kind of our perspective of what's happening there, and why we think it's important that we uh, you know, move forward with this application, and I'm sure we'll have other applications in the past, uh, a lo- along these lines, um, you, you know, the um, I've, uh, as I mentioned, we bought this center over twenty years ago, literally two weeks after nine eleven, and the last two years have been the most stressful um, for us, our business, retail's always an evolving business, and retail's gone through a lot of change even prior to COVID, but COVID really put us to the test, and for that, um, I'm very, very grateful, this, for the support the community has provided us, I'm grateful for our merchants and our, and our service providers, and um, how they showed up every day and continue to show up in, in pretty trying circumstances, and I'm very grateful to this council, the entire city staff, for their support, and for really being team, team players, and us making sure that uh, Janes Marketplace remains viable, because I think it um, carries a very special place in the hearts of a lot of our community. We've also tried to be a good partner, continue to invest, we innovate, we support the community, we, we've been gathering and memory-making plays for our neighbors, um, anybody who was there this year for Fourth of July, where we had five thousand people on the roof um, and of the parking lot, and um, you know, around the fountain, our summer concert series, Santa's Arrival, know how proud it must be to have this community where you see multiple generations show up and participate in just being together, which is something I think we, we all miss uh, as we go through this pandemic. Retail continues to evolve, never, never more than the last two years, but even prior to that, there's, there's been changes to our marketplace, and our job is to use our expertise to hopefully evolve with those changes, and bring Janes forward, and make sure that, that uh, we deliver for the community something that's viable and long-term, and we want Janes to continue to be the compute, community center for Thousand Oaks, so that, that's our, that's our key um, obligation, we feel, to the city, as well as to, to our tenants. Over the last few years, you know, we, we've upgraded our movie theater, we brought in Regal, we added Defy Extreme Sports, which is really known as the Bounce House, um, a very crazy place to be on any, any weekend, uh, we added Aldi Grocery Store, we added Five Below, we added Petco, we added Alta, we built a pad during COVID, where we put in Starbucks California Fish Grill, and we even added Mighty Axe, so anyone who wants to burn off some steam after council meetings, please go to Mighty Axe.
Mr. Segal, you have about uh, five seconds left.
Okay, well, I'm, let me, let me just, let me just go through, um, I didn't know that, but let me, let me go to the importance of what we're trying to accomplish here. The, the key element for us is, we, when, when Marshals left, we knew we wanted to pursue mixed use additionally on this site, and we found a hotel operator, um, who we'll introduce to you shortly, who came up with what we think is a fantastic concept, and we think it's well-located, they're gonna take the old Marshall box, which relocated down the street, they're gonna leave us thirteen thousand feet of viable retail.
Mr. Segal, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but um, uh, the way we're doing our timing tonight, I, I have to call you on it right now, but um, I'm gonna open it to any questions that one of my colleagues might have for you, so uh, if anybody has any direct questions for Mr. Segal. Mr. McNamee.
Thank you Mayor, the question is, what is the vision that you have for this building? Because the, my other council members brought up concepts of, are you gonna go to seventy-five feet, and what is the concept there, could you elaborate a little bit more on that for me?
Absolutely, yeah, we think we have a hell of an opportunity to use a lot of that retail that's been underutilized, and use the space over it to add um, to add um, multifamily units um, or townhomes, and so we have been looking at a number of concepts to utilize different parts of the site, so that uh, the hotel would kind of anchor it, provide amenities, and provide that kind of daily turnover and support for our business community, and yes, add additional retail units, we, we have a, our understanding of the general plan will give us a, a fair allotment of residential units, and we definitely intend to pursue those.
Do you intend this to be seventy-five feet, or will it be coming in at uh, something less than that, five stories, whatever the case may be, what is the current direction?
On the hotel, um, specifically on the hotel?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, ju- just below seventy-five feet.
Excellent, thank you Mayor.
Very good, any other questions from my colleagues? Mr. Segal, I just have uh, one quick question for you, uh, currently, that was the old Marshall's location, is that the, the location you were speaking to?
That's correct.
And is, is?
Next door, yeah.
And is there any, is there any viable um, uh, occupant that you could put in there that would not require this hotel, or is it, there's pretty much, you've tried to market this, and there's no, no other way to go?
Well, there's, there's two, to answer that question, one is, we, we had extensively marketed it to see if there would be another user for a thirty-thousand-foot box, but in, in today's world, one of the reasons Marshals relocated was they wanted to open up to, be of a space where they had parking in front, more of a traditional setting, so to put big box in that location is somewhat difficult, secondly, it, it is the right location between the parking structure um, and the other buildings to have some density, so we're gonna put them, we're gonna shallow up the retail that was there, so it's have thirty thousand feet of retail, we're at thirteen thousand feet, but more usable for smaller users who would cluster around a hotel, and then build the building above it.
Thank you, sir, I see that Ms. Builda Le Penya, Councilmember Builda Le Penya?
Thank you Mayor Engler, I wanted to ask you, Mayor Engler, is the applicant, uh, well, actually, the developer going to speak as well after Mr. Segal?
Yes, they're here.
Okay, good, then I'll leave my question for them, thank you.
Very good, um, I will uh, thank you, Mr. Segal, and I'll turn out to our next speaker, who is Atman Kadakia. And I hope I got your name right, sir.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. Can you guys hear me properly through the computer?
Yes, sir, you're coming across loud and clear.
I, I'm, and I'm sorry about that, I was having a little technical difficulties, but you guys can hear me okay right now?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, great, um, all right, so, uh, well, well, good evening to you all, and uh, thank you for having me here this evening, um, uh, my name is Atman Kadakia, and I'm the managing principal for Greens Development, uh, we're based in Irvine, California, and we have over thirty hotels either open for business in construction or in development, and we're very excited to develop this hotel here in Thousand Oaks and in the Janes Marketplace. One of the things that makes us unique is that we are not only the developer, but also the operator of all of our hotels, but we rarely sell our properties, and we're highly invested in things that affect the backbone of the project, things like parking, circulation, access, and ultimately, we take a great deal of pride in the quality of our product. It's been great working with Sandy and Newmark Merrill, and their entire team has been outstanding in our mutual efforts to design this project that we can all be proud of, I also want to take a moment to thank staff for all of their hard work on this project, commend the city manager, and the whole city team for having the vision to support a project like the one we're proposing, which will not only help revitalize the Janes Marketplace, but also serve the needs of many of the residences, visitors, and businesses of Thousand Oaks. This area is very special to me, as my wife is actually from Thousand Oaks, right off of Entu Park, and so I consider myself very much a local, we have come to Janes Marketplace many times over the years, so it's exciting and uh, and uh, and really a great opportunity to develop uh, in this uh, center. We are proposing a Homewood Suites by Hilton, which is an extended stay hotel within the Hilton family, all of our rooms will have full kitchens, along with high-quality finishes. The hotel is designed to serve the needs of many of the businesses and families in the area, including those visiting a loved one at the nearby Los Robles Regional Medical Center, or displaced from the, their home during a flood, fire, or simply just in between homes. Additionally, we expect to invest over fifty million dollars to develop this hotel, and we're expecting to bring in over two million a year directly to the city's general fund, which the city can then utilize to provide other community benefits and services. Currently, there's a severe lack of extended stay hotels in Thousand Oaks, and most businesses, uh, most of the business, excuse me, escapes to the nearby Westlake Village, we're confident that the proposed Hilton branded Homewood Suites will not only help bring some of that business back, but also help support new businesses as the city of Thousand Oaks continues to grow, particularly in the areas of technology and pharmaceuticals, we also believe that the city uh, staff may have um, some uh, some, some more additional things to share and add, I, I hope you guys can hear me okay, sorry, I'll get, I'm having audio and phone issues today, but did I come through okay?
You came through very well, and thank you, I think your, your time, your time is up, um, and uh-
Perfect, sorry about that.
Appreciate that, and um, our, our next public speaker, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Claudia Builda Le Penya has a question for you.
Thank you Mayor Engler, quick question, um, Mr. Kadakia, now, we do have a desperate need for housing in our area, in our city, and affordable housing, workforce housing, is that something that you were considering at some point, or not at all?
Uh, so not, not for this site, not for this site at all, um, from our side as the developer, uh, it is something that we do develop in general, and so we are interested in exploring other opportunities within the city for workforce housing, we actually have our own brand called Residences uh, by Greens, which is designed to be workforce housing, but it's not something we've contemplated for this particular location, uh, we intend to build this location as a hotel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kadakia, our, our next public speaker is Clint Foltz.
Hello, my name is Clint Foltz, I'm a member of the Cano Climate Coalition, and I live in Thousand Oaks, agenda, agenda item uh, ten B came to my attention earlier today when I saw a tweet from the Acorn Newspaper, they had an article online about a proposed hotel at the Janes Marketplace, this article hasn't even been in print yet, it's only online, the Cano Climate Coalition met on Friday night to look over tonight's agenda, and somehow, all of us missed this agenda item, so basically, today is the first any of us has heard of this, before I go on, I'd like to say that I live in walking distance from the Janes Marketplace, it's in my neighborhood, I suspect if I were to meet a Thousand Oaks resident on the street and ask them the following, they would have no idea what I was talking about, I'd say, hey Joe, have you heard about the agenda item to initiate height overlay zone change and authorize concurrent processing of entitlement applications, Z twenty-twenty-one dash seven zero nine nine seven, it's a resolution initiating a zone change and authorizing concurrent processing of entitlement applications, and a height overlay zone for land located at thirty-three West Hillcrest Drive, Thousand Oaks Marketplace, Joe, our fictional resident, would likely say something along the lines of, what the heck are you even talking about? I think most residents are being left in the dark concerning tonight's proposal, while I'm not personally against the building height, I suspect that most of the residents in Thousand Oaks would probably oppose this increase in building height, but the vast majority of residents probably have no idea that this was even before the council, is that fair to the residents? The Cano Climate Coalition feels that the city of Thousand Oaks needs centrally-located housing, not another hotel, we have a housing crisis, not a hotel crisis, the whole rationale for land use buildout was RENA compliance, longstanding building standards were weakened for the land use document, over significant community objection, and now the standards are being further weakened? With a hotel, we'd see increased traffic congestion and pollution do very little benefit to most residents in Thousand Oaks, at least with housing, the children of current residents might have the chance to have their kids uh, live in town uh, after they move out of the house, but I understand that that is beside the point of tonight's meeting, the bottom line is that voting yes on this agenda item most likely goes against the desires and needs of the majority of residents in Thousand Oaks, and most of them probably have no idea that this is even being voted on tonight, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Our next speaker is Karen Wilburn. Ms. Wilburn?
There we go. Is that as bad as I think it is?
Yeah, we're getting quite a bit of feedback from you, uh, Ms. Wilburn.
Is that better?
Say a couple of words, I think that is better.
Okay, how much time do I have, two or three minutes?
Oh, you have three minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Karen Wilburn, I'm a twenty-two-year resident of Newberry Park, and also represent Cano Valley up its sensible planning, current zoning for this parcel is thirty-five feet, twenty-seven years ago, the council approved the height overlay in two areas, and they are nowhere near seventy-five feet um, buildout in those areas, the vision of the updated general plan approved in May designated the Janes Mall as mixed-use low, which allows for a building height of fifty feet or four stories, CBASP does not oppose this, this presents them with a tremendous opportunity for redevelopment on this entire parcel, however, they also want to gain approval now for a seventy-five-foot overlay on another portion so they can possibly build a six-story hotel at some point in the future, at least Caruso came with a plan, to quote Ronald Reagan, here we go again, in November, you approved an exception to the vision of the new general plan at the lakes, staff supported this and said it was a one-time deal and would not open the flood dates to additional exceptions, now less than two months later, another exception is being recommended by staff, where will it end? In the past year, the majority on this council have voted in favor of the developers and not the residents who elected you, a four-story hotel on this site would be just fine, I implore you to finally show the people of Thousand Oaks that you hear us and deny this request, let's not kid ourselves, as Claudia said, if this is approved at this point, it will ultimately be approved when a plan is brought forth, if you approve this exception, what are you gonna say to the next one, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilburn, our final um, public speaker on this is Rosanna Guerra. Ms. Guerra?
Yes, my name is Rosanna Guerra, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, thank you Mayor Engler and City Council, I come before you this evening in opposition of any new development of hotels in the Janes Marketplace, what we need is additional housing that is amenable for working families and young professionals, we need condos, apartments, in a village-type atmosphere, what, that has less impact on the environment, when the housing element of the general plan was first proposed, looking at the Janes Marketplace was talked about as an ideal location for condos and apartments, that would be reasonable for working families, now a developer is proposing a hotel that doesn't fit the landscape of the area, the Four Seasons Courtyard by Marriott, Westlake Inn, the Hyatt, plus the approved hotel of the Timber Project can accommodate business travelers, I'm confused by the priorities of considering a hotel when everyone in the city knows we need housing, thank you.
Thank you, um, I believe we have one more late uh, speaker, Adam Haverstock, I believe your hand is up.
Thank you Mayor Engler and members of the city council, my name is Adam Haverstock, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce, I also serve as the Director of Operations of the Cano Valley Tourism Improvement District, our tourism district works to increase the occupancy of the sixteen hotels in the cities of Thousand Oaks and Agora Hills, we have developed the Visit Cano Valley brand, and market our community to potential travelers in the Southern California region to increase overnight stays in local hotels, those overnight stays generate tax revenue for the city and create a lot of jobs, I'm speaking tonight in support of item ten B, to allow height overlay zone change, to support the development of a future hotel at the Janes Marketplace, the city of Thousand Oaks is in need of more hotels, the most recent hotel in the city, the Hampton Inn, opened in two thousand nine, we haven't built a new hotel in Thousand Oaks in thirteen years, in August two thousand nineteen, prior to COVID, our district reported an occupancy rate of eighty-four percent, that's pretty much max capacity, in order to get an eighty-four percent average occupancy, you need to have a sell-out one hundred percent of weekend rooms for leisure travelers, and a one hundred percent sell-out of midweek rooms for business travelers, the only open days left are Wednesdays and Sundays- The only open days left are Wednesdays and Sundays, which are impossible to sell by themselves. As a result of being effectively sold out, room rates skyrocketed. In August 2021, this past year, we reported an occupancy of 71%. That's an increase of 46% from our COVID bottom occupancy at 48 in 2020. It won't be more than one or two years for us to once again reach the previous occupancy highs in 2019. If we haven't increased our hotel capacity by then, you can expect hotel rates to be prohibitively high going forward. Please approve this item before you tonight, which is the first step to Thousand Oaks meeting the demands of the travel industry in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haverstock. Madam Clerk, do you have anybody else?
We do not.
Thank you. Very good. I think, having spoken with our clerk, I believe that I would be willing to give our applicant, Mr. Siegel, another few minutes for any additional comments or rebuttal. Mr. Siegel, are you still, still here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Very good. Go, go ahead, Mr. Siegel, you have five minutes.
Yeah, and I don't need five minutes. I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't aware of the timer before, I would have been more respectful of the time. I think, I think that, you know, our, our view is, is this, prior to even the zoning discussions, we had looked at residential mix, that we, we acknowledge the need for residential here and we do have plans for residential development and we think that these things all coexist and they fit into the puzzle that we need to fill here, which is providing customers for our existing restaurants, for existing gym, for our existing retailers. And I think you're seeing more and more of this as a trend in shopping centers and I think it's key to the success of Jan's Marketplace. The benefit of this hotel, and, and one of the reasons that I believe we need the height and the mass that we're talking about, is we want to provide an appropriate amount of amenities so that we, the, the site has enough daily visitors that become potential visitors for our restaurants and our gym and our service providers, as well as provides amenities to the city, such as meeting space, gathering space, places for our surrounding businesses, you know, visiting vendors, things like that. We, we are very excited by Greens' development. As you know, from looking at our tenants, we try to find the right people to be partners for us in the space. I think Greens has come up with a very exciting design, which when, when you see it and when it goes through the process, I think you'll be very pleased with it. Compared to what the buildings look like today and what we would be adding, I think this would be extraordinary, extraordinarily additive. From changing out what was a big Marshall's box and a monolipid walls to something that has much more street scenery, I think is going to be a very big plus for us. You know, as I mentioned, we have two quality hotel brands, 210 rooms, probably 300 visitors a day going through there, and we still will have capacity to add lots of residential units, and we know that that's critical. We've been a participant in the city for 20 years, so we're not a Johnny Come Lately or, or planning on leaving the community anytime soon, and we, we, we're very anxious to get this building built, follow it up with some residential planning, and move forward and expedite the processing of entitlements for this project. So, that's, that's all I have to say, and I'm happy to answer anybody else's questions on our long-term thoughts for Jan's Marketplace.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. I do see Councilmember Jones's hand up. Councilmember Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, since you plan in the future, as I just heard, to do residential development, why, why don't, wouldn't you consider doing that now? I mean, if you have this land available, since we have such a dire need for housing, especially affordable housing, that would really be, you know, very appropriate for Thousand Oaks right now. Why don't you do, consider doing a residential, particularly affordable housing first and maybe put off your hotel plans for later? Also, well, go ahead, would you answer that question, please?
Of course, Councilman, yeah. Well, the answer is, is that we have been planning for both. The hotel truthfully pre-existed even the conversation that we had about the general plan amendment. So, it's predated the general plan amendment by quite some time. This matter would have already, already been through and possibly under construction if it wasn't for COVID. So, you know, secondly, the location of the hotel as, as compared to where we would put residential, happens to be pretty ideal because it's right at the focal point of the parking garage and the way that it sets up, it, it allows valuable retail space on the bottom and allows appropriate parking for guests and visitors to the hotel, and if you saw the plan, you could see why that is at that particular location. We, we do have other locations where we've been, we've been discussing residential and city staff can, can confirm that we've had many discussions about where that residential can be located, the best ways to utilize that space, and so on. So, it, it, it's not a either-or situation. I think it's a benefit of both. The hotel brings us a certain benefit to our, to the center, as well as, I think, to the city, as well as, as you heard previously, deals with a lack of capacity in hotel space, by the way, that Hampton Inn that he referred to that was built in 2009, we built it off Vento Park Road. So, you know, we're, we're definitely aware of, of the mixed, you know, needs that, that exist, and that's what we think is the proper mixing of space at Jan's Marketplace.
Well, I understand that proximity to a parking structure would be good for a hotel, but it also would be good for condos or.
Of course.
Amenants. I, I, I just feel that, you know, you might consider helping us with our demands we're getting from the state, especially, you know, we're meeting needs for market-rate housing or we seem to be on a path for that because we don't seem to be approving much affordable. I mean, this would really be a great help to us. I think that would be an ideal place for affordable housing because they have such close proximity to all the things that they would need. You could, you know, do your shopping right there. It, it would be, to me, as far as our plans go, to be an ideal place for that. And also, my other question was, 75 feet is high for me, and I understand that the intent of the matter before us tonight is that that seems to be a general, if I understand what was said earlier, that seems to be a general way of going if you want to raise the height, you automatically go up. And my earlier question had to do with the fact that if that's true, I, I wouldn't mind giving some leeway, but that would be a little high for me, and I wonder, can you build a hotel at less than 75 feet if that's, if you don't want to consider affordable housing?
Well, one, just to be aware, I, I'm not, I absolutely counsel and respect the need, and, and we're the biggest proponents of needing additional housing because the people who live in the community are shoppers, are patrons, and these are the people who, you know, are long-term, you know, long-term contributors to, to our success. So, I'm not, I think our view is that we are 100% interested in the housing track. Just be aware, even today, we don't have a process. Jan's Marketplace doesn't have a process yet to be able to build housing on-site. This is a, this is a process that we've been talking to the city manager and others about so that we can get in a queue to eventually have the ability to, to do those entitlements. On the 75 feet, I think this is a discussion we've had between us and the Greens group, which has been an incredible group to work with, which is the mix between the amount of units you provide and the amenity level you can provide around it. And, and the benefit of this site, unlike most sites in the city, is that you have 50-foot parking garage right behind you, so you're, and no one would see that height. You have, you know, 500-something feet between the street and, and then you have a building blocking and another building behind that, and we've done sightline studies to, to look at that, and, and so you're, and then you're, you have another 50-foot building on the other side of you, so you're pretty screened in. So if you're going to do anything like that anywhere, this is, in a lot of ways, almost the ideal space to do it. Now, I know I, I can't show that to you today because we don't have those materials to present and that will come back at a different time, but we have, we, we, it's not like we're willy-nilly saying, let's just take the max we can and, and, you know, you know, over, overdevelop the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And, Mr. Kadakia, because of the way we do things, Mr. Siegel had your time, so I have to pass on calling on you, but Councilmember Bill de la Peña also has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. The question I had is, we know of a couple of other proposals underway for hotels in the city of Thousand Oaks. Which hotel currently in the city of Thousand Oaks? I, I don't think there are any that are 73 or 75 feet in height. So, my question for Mr. Kadakia is, would you be able to build anything lower than 73 or 75 feet in height?
Okay, can you guys hear me again?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about this. I, I apologize about my technical. Okay, so I, I can't hear you, but you guys can hear me and then I'll put this back on. So, so first of all, you know, all great questions. I, I think anytime a, a project like this or any project like this comes before a city, especially a city that's been around as long as Thousand Oaks has, a city that's as successful as the city of Thousand Oaks, I can certainly understand hesitation, questions, and thoughts. I, I want to refocus one major initiative of it tonight. We're, we're not seeking an approval of our hotel. We're not seeking an approval to, to, to go and build this hotel. We are seeking simply the ability to work towards entitling our hotel. We will be back in front of you with rendering, with visuals, with heights, with designs, with schemes, and the city council at that time can certainly deny the project. You know, if we don't work with your stakeholders, if we don't work with all of the community folk, if we don't work with each and every one of you individually to understand your concerns, give your, you know, give an opportunity for you to look at our project one-on-one, take your feedback, go back, tinker our project, design it, we can't design it in a vacuum. You know, we have to design it with all of your thoughts and feedback in mind. So, so what we're here for today is not an approval of our hotel, and, and I do feel that a lot of the questions are centered around perhaps what may be seeking an approval of the hotel. We're really focused on just simply having the permission to go out and spend at least another half a million dollars towards plans, designs, drawing, studies, and work over the next six months to come back to you, hopefully with a favorable staff report, and if we are successful with a favorable staff report, then it'll be in front of you for approval. Now, I didn't mean to dismiss your question. To answer your question specifically, the hotel currently as proposed is coming in right, a, a hair over 70 feet, I think it's about 72 feet. Part of that is some tower elements that are aesthetically driven. The hotel is intended to be five stories. It has a 20-foot ground plate, 10-foot floor plates as you go up. So, the height of the finished floor on the fifth level, 20, 30, 40, 50, well, it would be right at 50, 20, 40, 50, right at 50 feet. From that 50 feet, then you have the height to the roof, then you have some roof elements, and then you have some, some, some gingerbread, if you will, right, decorative treatments. So, at the total height would come in somewhere between that 70 to 75-foot range. But again, that's, you know, again, I'm trying to answer your question, but to go back to the concept, I'm really hoping that we can re-center the focus tonight around simply allowing us to have an opportunity to go at risk, spend a tremendous amount of money and a tremendous amount of effort towards hopefully seeking your approval here three, four, five, six months from today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bill de la Peña. I see Councilmember McNamee's hand up. Go ahead, Mr. McNamee.
This is for Mr. Siegel and Mr. Kadakia, who has just spoken. The, what I'm hearing is that because of our biotech hub development, many visitors come here for not just an overnight stay, but maybe here for a few weeks or months, thus the extended stay. The room amenities would allow for a full kitchen. Instead of these residents or these visitors going outside of the city, we would then be able to capture approximately $200 million for city revenue from staying at a hotel within our city. Sounds like a good deal to me. We're losing the revenue, let's keep it within the city. The idea that these are, again, extended stay, let's say the market tanks and you've got a problem with occupancy that doesn't look like it's going to resolve anytime soon. Is it possible that these could be moved over to permanent housing on a year-to-year kind of basis, as like an apartment, as compared to keeping them as hotels? Is that a possibility for this type of combined or mixed use?
Well, well, Councilmember, first of all, great question. To answer your specific question, I, I don't believe that we can turn this into a apartment in the event that the market did tank, because we'll be under a license agreement with Hilton over the course of 20 years to operate as a Hilton-branded flag and a Hilton-branded property. That being said, our guests are guests who stay for a long time, so nothing stops us from renting to a guest on a month-to-month basis, but extending that for a duration of time such that it accommodated their needs. As far as the tax revenues, we're losing the Westlake Village. The residence in Westlake Village is beyond on fire. The numbers are off the charts. People are commuting from Thousand Oaks, Amgen, and all of these areas to go stay in Westlake Village. They're dining there, they're shopping there, they're staying there. We're losing tax revenue and we're losing the opportunity to keep those residents local. We have, over the course of business, the, the company's been in business over 30 years. We spent, we've spent a lot of time analyzing the market, we've spent a lot of time analyzing Thousand Oaks and, and this opportunity, and, and we're very confident that we are going to be able to bring a lot of business to the city of Thousand Oaks that currently is escaping this region.
Mr. Siegel, question for you. Given that people come in from out of town and even though they may have a kitchen that's there within the suite itself, do you see any increase in the occupants, the guests at the hotel utilizing the restaurants and the retail stores within the Jan's Mall and/or the Oaks Mall, which are within walking distance? Do you see that as a potential?
Well, Councilman, first of all, that's a great question, I appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, we have found, and by the way, that was, you know, the first thing I built was the Hampton Inn on Vento, and then I built the shopping center where the, the Walmart grocery is and the other users around that, and in other locations where we have hotels. Hotels have been a proven generator, especially for our restaurants and our gyms, and it is, it is definitely a real pickup for us because when people come out of town, they like to explore new areas and they often get out of the hotel, you know, they don't want to be stuck in those walls, even though they're beautiful walls, and they come out and, and visit our restaurants. So, yeah, we think it would be a real boost to tho, to those tenants.
So, there'd be great synergy that goes between the hotel as well as the retail and restaurants there. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Kadakia.
And Sandy, that's a great, that's, that's a great point and, and great, 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 great observation. I, I can tell you some statistics that might be very surprising. 7%, only 7% of extended stay hotel guests cook in their room. It, it's unbelievable. You, you know, they're extended stay, they want the kitchen, they want the, the cooktop, they want the pots, the pans. The statistics are that 7% actually cook in the room. What they do is they go out, they eat, they dine, they bring food back. Instead of eating out of styrofoam, they're now able to heat it up in their microwave and they're able to eat the leftovers on a plate. When they're getting a cup of coffee, instead of drinking it out of a plastic cup, they get to drink it out of a mug. But as far as the, the, the customers of the hotel, especially a hotel of this caliber, this is a Homewood Suites, it's an upscale property, a lot of the business that is not displaced or local will come from corporate, and corporate has historically big budgets in terms of spend. They get per diem, 70, 80, 90, $100 a day. They get to take that per diem, they get to walk outside to location inside the Jan's Marketplace, shop, dine, and eat. As far as the guests who stay for a long time, the fact that Aldi as a grocer is right there, i- it's extremely convenient, and so I see an opportunity for the guests that do want to cook to be able to walk locally to a grocery store within the center. store within the center, purchase product from there, and then come back and take it to their room.
Thank you. And I understand to your point that this is just to allow the height overlay so you can explore possibilities. Council here is not going to be making any decisions pending what kind of plans you bring forward and propose to the council and the city staff. So I follow that this is not the last time we will see this project, and it's not a point where we necessarily need to make a definite choice as to whether this moves forward or not. Thank you very much for your answers.
Mayor Engler, this is City Attorney Tracy. Can I just follow up to a question that Councilmember McNamie asked regarding length of stay?
Please do.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember McNamie, there are a couple of things I just want you to keep in mind. However, at first outset, I should say, we really need to focus on what's before the city council. What's before the city council is initiation of a zoning code amendment, basically, a zoning code change, and a request to allow concurrent processing of an application, which is very similar to like what we've been handling on the mixed-use scene, which is a pre-screen, where it's a, you know, it's a thumbs up, thumbs down. Is this something that we're interested in allowing an applicant to actually spend time and money to prepare plans and then bring it back to the city council for the formal consideration? This is just basically a green light to allow them to actually submit an application, or a red light saying, we're not interested in even considering a hotel on this site. But in answer to your question on extending the duration for beyond a 30-day, we, you know, I do want you to be aware that we do have a municipal code that does place limits on that, on their duration. And obviously, turning anything into residential would have Measure E implications. Again, that, those questions are a little bit outside of what we're here tonight, but I just wanted to give you the information so you had it tonight. But again, tonight's purpose is two questions. Do we initiate a zoning code amendment, and do we allow the applicant to submit an application while processing the zoning code amendment? So thank you for that.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones, Councilmember Jones, your hand is up.
Minor point, Mr. Kadakia keeps talking about moving business to Westlake Village. Are you talking just about the LA portion of Westlake Village? Because two of the very largest malls in what is normally called Westlake Village are in the city of Thousand Oaks.
So I'm speaking, and again, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I'm speaking specifically about a competitor to this hotel. And a competitor to this hotel that we're proposing would be the Residence Inn that is in the city of Westlake Village. The Residence Inn is a Marriott product. We're bringing in a Hilton product. That Residence Inn is over 20 years old. They are running, they ran in 2019, 96% occupancy. That is not a sustainable occupancy for hospitality. That is an insane occupancy. And a bulk of their demand has come from Thousand Oaks. So when you actually analyze the guests who are staying there, they don't have a Hilton, Marriott-level, high-quality extended-stay product. So guests who are working down on, at Amgen, for example, are now staying for a week, two weeks, three weeks at a time. Another interesting thing about, and I can speak about Amgen here, and then there's a bunch of biotechs, there's a lot of companies, but I'm going to bring up Amgen for a reason. One of my best friends from college has been at Amgen for over a decade. And one of the interesting things he's explained to me is that now, due to COVID, a lot of, a lot of employees who used to work at Amgen, they have now moved away. But what they're doing is they're coming back for two, three weeks at a time. So what they do is, they may have moved to a different city, and they're working remotely, but they're coming in for two, three weeks at a time, twice, thrice, four times a year. So in his view, he believes that the demand for extended stay post-COVID will actually be higher from a business travel perspective than pre-COVID. It was a fascinating thought, because you would think, okay, well, hey, people are working from home, what does that do to business travel? What does that do to hotel occupancy? But specifically in the sector of extended stay, which is what we're catering to, we actually expect an uptick due to the impacts of COVID to the corporate workplace. And again, I know I'm going off topic, because again, we're talking about the hotel, and I'm so excited to talk about that. But that's going to come, hopefully, if we can get through tonight as an approval, to simply allow the city to accept our application to review and work towards this project. You know, of course, at the end of the day, if the hotel doesn't make sense for the city, it is your city, and if we're unsuccessful, we're unsuccessful. But we're really hoping and seeking your blessing tonight on simply allowing the city staff to accept our application and work towards processing this hotel.
Just for my information, very quickly, why do people want to stay in a hotel in Thousand Oaks? We're not a pleasure, you know, vacation recreation area that I know of. So the typical occupant, typical occupant would be here for what reason?
So that's a great question, sir. One of the major, one of the major drivers here is you have, you have Los Robles Regional Medical Center. You have almost 400 beds. When you have family members who become ill, or a loved one becomes ill, people travel in from out of the area. That's, that's just one, one of many examples. You have the corporate business, Amgen being a big driver, other corporate biotech businesses, these businesses have guests, we just talked about that. One of the other things that happened in a city like Thousand Oaks is unfortunately, like for example, in my case, I moved into a home, my brother was installing a TV, like a knucklehead, he drilled through the fire sprinkler system. My entire house flooded, and my wife and I were displaced for three months, while we had to go and rip everything out and refix it, right? And those are things that happen day-to-day. It happens every day. Unfortunately, fires do happen. Unfortunately, these types of things happen. When people who are living in a city, a city as large as Thousand Oaks, there's a lot of demand for those types of day-to-day household accidents. Another thing that happens is, you know, for example, someone needs to sell their home, or they need to vacate their apartment, and they're waiting for their next location. So they have this period of two weeks, three weeks, a month, sometimes in-between housing, transitionary, right? That's a demand driver for extended-stay housing. These are just three examples, you know, but there's, there's a real, I mean, there's a real, for a city the size of Thousand Oaks, I mean, there'd be a laundry list, and we can get into that, and we can share a lot of that, too, in terms of market studies, feasibility studies, economic analysis. All of those types of things will be part of our application when we ultimately apply. But one of the key evidences here is the city of Westlake Village is right down the street. Residence Inn is right down the street. 96% occupancy, you know, 2019, obviously pre-COVID, but 2019, 96% occupancy. I mean, that is a testament to the demand that there is in this area.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I'm still a little concerned about the height, and I understand we're giving you, if we give you a green light. But in the final question, if you can't build it at 70 feet, are, if you come back later, are you going to abandon it?
You know, I don't think the hotel works less than that height. And the reason is because the cost to build the hotel, the cost to build the public space, the lobby, the infrastructure, and all of the expenses that go into it, if we're unable to get the density that's required, it simply just doesn't work. Now, all of this being said, I think, and unfortunately, we're unable to share, I think by law, and maybe the city attorney can clarify, but I think we're unable to share some of the images, we're unable to share some of the studies. But when you actually look at this, where strategically located, as Sandy was explaining, how it's in the middle of the center, how it's protected by, on one side, the parking structure, on one side, it's in the back of the mall in the middle. When you actually drive around the streets and you look at this building from the aerials and the visuals, it is, I'm very confident that the city council, when they have the ability to actually look through this thing, and they have the ability to look at the images and the views and the renderings, I'm optimistic and I'm confident that the immediate hesitation may be assuaged.
So the answer, the answer is no, right?
You know, respectfully, sir, at this time, the answer is no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Any other questions for my colleagues? Very good. And thank you to Mr. Kadari and to Mr. Siegel for presenting that to us. I think we now have to go to some discussion amongst ourselves. I'll open it up, Mr. Adams. Councilmember Adams.
Bob, Mayor Engler, before we go, I think Kelvin may have some follow-up items after comments.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, you have some comments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just based on some of the public comment that we received, I think it's important for us to note at this point that a height overlay is required in order to exceed the 35-foot height limit. And because of the way our code is written and the language in it, it allows for up to 75 feet. So once you have the height overlay and it goes over the 35 feet, that is simply the maximum. The height overlay in this particular area is wholly consistent with the preferred land use map endorsed by city council back in May of last year. Additionally, this is just the request to initiate a height overlay, which essentially gives the applicant the ability to submit a formal application. At that time, we'll get into reviewing the technical details and flesh out the details of the height, parking, and other zoning-related issues at that particular time. And this point was raised during the discussions as well. Just to clarify, allowing the application to move forward with the hotel in this particular application does not preclude housing from being built at a later date, at a later time on that particular site. It's not an either-or proposition. This site is sufficient enough in size to allow for both, if that were to happen at a future date. And just part of development and building a healthy city and environment requires a mix of uses of not just housing, but commercial to support that. And then, of course, as we noted in our general plan update, we're trying to create a jobs-housing balance. And hotel uses help support the job balance in the city in terms of supporting our employers, as which was described during comments. And that's all that we have in response.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I see I have Councilmember Adam with his hand up. Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. We're on to discussion, I take it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. So a lot's been said tonight about affordable housing, and I don't think anyone can argue the fact that our city, like many others around Southern California, need affordable housing. In fact, it's a very popular thing to do to advocate for affordable housing. And I feel that our city understands that, and we are facing up to that challenge. In just a couple of months, we'll be talking about a project that's going to offer us 50 affordable housing units. And I think the city very well understands that. But that's not the only thing the city needs. That's not the only thing we need. We have to expand our view here a little bit. We also need our malls to survive. I think that's very important. As Mr. Siegel said, his mall has been struggling. And we all know the challenges that our malls face, not just here, but all across the country, from online buying, et cetera, et cetera. You know the story. And I applaud Mr. Siegel for looking to ways to innovate, to face these challenges, to repurpose a very small part of the mall. We're talking about one acre here, folks, out of a 20-acre parcel, that he thinks if it's dedicated to an extended-stay hotel, that it'll provide a community benefit for our city and will also ensure the long-term survival of the Janes Mall, which I think we all want to see. He's also stated that he does not rule out affordable housing on the site. There's 19 other acres by which that could be built. Mr. Parker also reiterated the fact that those parking lots hold that possibility. But what we have in front of us tonight is not a choice between affordable housing and a hotel. What we have in front of us tonight is just the very entry point to look at this proposal, this innovative proposal, that will in the long run help the Janes Mall, I believe. As far as this height overlay, I think we all recall when we went through the general plan update a few months back, and we went zone by zone, we also all voted 5-0 to keep in mind that certain areas need some added height. Two of those areas were our malls, the Janes Mall and the Oaks Mall. And we all, I believe, agreed on that. Now, we have to vote on the general plan update down the road, I understand that. But the way we talked that night coincides with what's being placed in front of us this evening. Do I think the project's going to fit there? Yeah, actually, I do. I mean, there's, there's no neighborhoods around it, there's no open space around it. It's in the middle of a very commercialized area. And frankly, I don't think the height's going to be a real issue. It's tucked way back in there. But that's all remains to be seen. As it's been made clear to us, we have a long way to go on this project, and there's a lot of things to consider as to whether or not it's going to work for the city. All we're doing tonight is allowing it to just take another step forward. So, you know, with that in mind, I'm at the point where I'm ready to, to make a motion that we, in fact, grant the height overlay, move 10B. I really think, I think it's a very innovative proposal. And this won't be the end of it. We'll hear things from the Oaks Mall, too, I can almost promise you. So this is something we're going to have to contend with. But if we want these malls to survive, like they are not doing in some communities, we've got to be open to these kind of proposals. So with that, I will move 10B, and I await the comments of my fellow councilmembers.
Thank you, Councilmember Adam. Councilmember McNamie, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. As I see this project, we have $200 million leaving the city, going to our neighbor city of Westlake, simply because we are not providing that extended-stay-type hotel that would benefit the people who come in to visit Amgen or the other biotech companies for an extended period of time, or the hospital to visit a loved one. The developer and the Janes Mall have already done extensive studies that there is a market need here, and you don't put $50 million into a project just to find out that it's not going to work. So I'd like to keep that money within Thousand Oaks, because they are leaving the city for those particular types of services, in this case, an extended-stay hotel, which is a high-end extended-stay hotel. I think there's going to be a lot of synergy with this project, in that it will benefit the retail and restaurants at the Janes Mall. As the guests come to the hotel, they can go and use the different amenities we have and offer at the Janes Mall. So again, that's more revenue for the businesses and keeping the sales tax revenue here to provide the services we do for the city. I realize this is not a final vote. This is just simply allowing for the overlay that can go up to 75 feet. As Mr. Parker has illustrated, it will be below that. But as to how low, that's going to be under discussion. Council still retains the ability to say no anywhere along that way, or modify it depending on what we finally decide. But this just essentially gives the green light to start developing plans, to submit through staff, and finally to council for final input and discussion. So I see no reason why we should not be allowing that to occur, allow this to move forward. And then we, as council, can decide, is it too tall? Is it not meeting our market needs? We still have low-income housing that can be put in at various other locations on the Janes Mall, but this site is specifically a hotel, and thus still opens up that possibility for additional housing that our city needs. So I look forward to the vote, and thank you very much for allowing me to make these comments.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamie. I see Councilmember Bill de la Peña's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. We, of course, have heard this numerous times over the last decade or more, that this is just, this is not the final vote. But we know that... But we know that a few months from now, this will indeed be the final vote. So, whatever we decide tonight will be approved later on. That's just the pattern that we have seen in the city over the years. Whether it's residential or commercial, very few projects have been denied based on, after they were prescreened or had applied. So, I just wanted to be clear on that. Yes, the mall is absolutely struggling. The mall needs help. We need hotels, and discussions about additional hotels have been underway for quite some time. And I'm sure we will see more hotels and applications for that because the city needs it. Now, I've heard a lot about market and demand and all that from the applicant, but the council has not been presented with actual data or anything like that. So, all of this that we are receiving tonight is verbal. And a lot can be said when we hear from residents, from public speakers, from applicants. But it is always even more helpful when we do have actual evidence, actual publications that can say and prove that what is being said is actually correct and factual. When we decided back in May, when we went step-by-step over the general plan update, we went through that exercise for the one and only reason, namely, to provide housing, not to build hotels necessarily, but to provide housing. That is what we are charged to do with our housing element, for example, which was discussed by the Planning Commission last night. I happened to watch that. And the goal of the City Council is to provide more housing. Lately, I've heard we need to provide all sorts of housing, whether it's luxury or not. We, although, we have over 500% more than we need in terms of above-market-rate housing, unmarket-rate housing. We're sorely lacking in workforce housing. And the reason, as I said, we discussed the mixed-use law in all of the city and in other areas is to provide the housing that is expected by the state for us to be provided, not to be built, but at least to make room for that. So, my question tonight is, we went through a two-and-a-half-year exercise to figure out where to build housing, in particular, affordable housing. And while the general plan, and as has been noted, the update, has not been approved by the City Council, we are already making changes to what we initially wanted to do. We have other inquiries and applications potentially coming before us, people wanting, applicants wanting to do projects before we vote or the public votes on the general plan. And I'm very much in favor of a public vote on the general plan. We... You know, I wonder, was this an exercise in futility if we keep receiving requests to do this, that, and the other, and not necessarily working toward the goal? And I do agree, we need more than just housing in the city of Thousand Oaks, absolutely. I agree with that. But I do wonder, with the time of money, time and money and the amount of time that went into the general plan update, here we are now doing something that is really not necessarily in concert or in agreement with the stated goal. I recognize the need for a different use at the Janes Mall. I think that the applicant can provide what he wants to provide at a lower height. We don't have, we don't need high-rise hotels. I'd much rather see apartments, for example. So, I... While we keep saying this is not the final vote, the vote tonight, and I assume it will be approved, is the way it will go in the end. That's been the pattern all along. Thank you.
I see Mr. Powers with his hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to answer Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña's question that she posed within there. We are in the middle of the general plan update. And I think, as the council knows, in the intervening time within that general plan update, we continue to have things that come forward that need to be addressed from a business perspective. And as Mr. Siegel mentioned, their discussions with the hotel operator preceded even the general plan discussion. So, these things don't come quickly. So, they have been in discussions around that. If this had been the Aldi grocery store in the front, and they were looking for height flexibility, we'd be in the same process. So, you know, us as staff bringing this initiation is simply to question the council. To embark upon the initiation process allows the applicant to proceed with their application process. Absent that, we're not able to accept that application. And so, there may be other instances like this, and I don't have any on the immediate horizon. But, you know, from our perspective, we have to, we feel like we have to, when we have areas that are consistently discussions that have been had by the council, it's worth bringing the question to the council. And in this case, you know, the general plan has contemplated not just housing in this area, but also economic development. And there is an economic development element focused in that plan. And that has been, you know, a component of what's being talked about. So, there's been some consistency there. Our focus tonight, though, just as a reminder for the entire council, is processing of business. Absent us going through this, the applicant would simply have to pass on the investment that they have lined up, not process that to move forward, and that investment would go elsewhere. So, we felt it was important to process this as we would. That's our job, as our authority. And so, that's why it's in front of you. In these intervening times before the general plan is completed, we're going to have things that are just going to need to be processed the old way.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Any other comments from my colleagues? Very good. I just have a couple of quick comments. Again, a very good discussion, and I appreciate everybody's input on this. The question of whether this should be a housing location or a hotel location or is really, those two are not mutually exclusive, in my mind. We can have a hotel-type building in the middle of the existing mall and also have some housing in that area as well. I don't think those are, just because one is going to be part of the equation excludes the other. The, I fully appreciate that the mall does need some help, and it's needed some help for a while. The, Mr. Siegel and his investors are looking at this as a possible way of bringing the mall forward into being not only a more viable mall, but bringing more business into town. I did a little bit of research on the need for hotels. I think we have to be, we do have to recognize and be knowledgeable that with our outreach to bring in some permanent supportive housing into our community, we are probably going to, well, we almost certainly are going to lose at least one of our existing hotels and probably another of our existing hotels to accomplish that goal of helping our people experiencing homelessness out there in our community. So, those are going to be some older motel structures, motel businesses. So, to bring in a newer motel, hotel, in this case, an extended-stay hotel, probably is good long-term planning if we're going to accomplish the other goal as well. So, I do think about the height of this building. Seven stories is higher than anything in the area, although there is a building across the street that is about 70-foot. The old Exxon building, that is about 70-foot. And because it is placed so far back on the property, its height is disguised. And I think that would be probably an effect here at the Janes Mall as well. I think the applicant and Mr. Siegel and his group definitely hear our concern about a height of a building that would be higher than what would work in the Janes Mall area. And that's something we're all sensitive to, even with the screening and the distance from Moore Park Road. So, on balance, I think the going forward with this type of proposal is probably wise, given the need for the hotels in the area and given the fact that it doesn't affect any housing that we may be putting on in any other property within our community. Our general plan, and the general plan and the housing element that we discussed at our meeting the other day with the Planning Commission, the housing element addressed the next eight years. And the general plan looks at a 25-year span. So, they are complementary, but not the same plan. So, I think that having a general plan that addresses uses within the community, that changes some of our commercial or gives the opportunity for our commercials to redevelop or repurpose some of the commercial areas is probably also wise in the long term. So, this project is coming to us now. I might agree with our councilmember Ed Jones that I would prefer to see housing come in first. But this is the one that's before us tonight, and it's really to look at whether we want to put a height overlay and allow the concurrent processing. So, with that said, I would probably be supportive of the motion by Councilmember Adam. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, based on what you just said, you know, I feel really torn on this because I'd like to see the Janes marketplace be successful and make a profit. And I would like very much to, you know, give them a help or a support in that regard. But I still don't understand why they might not consider affordable housing for that. There's a dire need for affordable housing. If they want to do a hotel later, I don't understand why. It seems to me that that would be a moneymaker, too. And that would, you know, change part of the mall from retail to housing. I mean, I don't know if our staff has mentioned to them that we have this dire need, that we have this state mandate, and we're fulfilling, or we seem to be on the way of fulfilling, market-rate housing, but we're doing nothing. I mean, I know something is in the future, something always seems to be in the future. But I'd like to see something right away. And we did go through that general plan process. And we divided the city into seven areas, and we went through each one. And we specifically said that we, in some of these shopping malls, you know, this one and the large one that herbs and arbovus and so forth. I forget all the areas. But we did designate this for a good place for affordable housing. So, I'm really torn. I'd like to help the Janes Mall. I appreciate approving commerce as well as housing. But I just don't know why they have to put the hotel first. And so, I just don't want to, another thing, I don't want to lead them down the primrose path in my first vote. My vote may not be necessary for anything. But if I were to approve it now, based on the height, I might turn it down later. So, I don't think that would be a great help to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I think we have to remember that we have approved some affordable housing in the recent past. The Timber School location has, what was it, 26 or 27 units? Councilmember Adam referred to the Kmart property that has proposed, and we'll see how it comes forward to us, 50 or so affordable units. So, we are doing some work toward affordable units, which is, can we do more? I think we should do more, but don't discount some of the steps we've already taken. I think the applicant has, should have heard us as far as the heights and how this building has to fit on that property. And so, I would hope that going clear-eyed into this, that they would see some of our comments and some of our hesitation on that. So, I believe in giving them the opportunity, as we have in other locations, for people to do things. But any other comments from my colleagues? Then I would call for the vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña?
No.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones, or Mayor Protem Jones?
No.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries three to two with Councilmembers Bill DeLaPeña and Jones voting no.
Okay, we have a third set on Items 10 here. We have our Lawrence Drive and Teller Road intersection improvements. We have Nader Hadari from the Public Works, also available is Shamir Shamhawari for questions. Mr. Hadari?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I just wanted to verify if my slide is up?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight here on our department report for the Lawrence Drive and Teller Road intersection improvement project. This is a current westbound view of Teller Road as you are approaching Lawrence Drive. Currently, the intersection is a four-way stop, and it's pretty unique. It's the only one in the city that has this degree of misalignment. There's a roughly 30-foot offset between the westbound and eastbound Teller Road there, coming in and out of the intersection. This location is currently the city's number-one intersection for signalization due to the traffic volumes and safety considerations. The proposed project will help achieve our goals and the objectives, which are to eliminate or lessen that intersection offset, provide the traffic signal control to better, to reduce intersection conflicts between automobile pedestrians and bicyclists, better serve existing volumes and the future of that area, improve pedestrian safety by adding marked crosswalks with pedestrian countdowns, and improve illumination after sundown with the intersection lighting. As I mentioned, the primary goal is to address that intersection offset. This image shows the existing intersection in streets, as well as, in purple, it's showing the existing city's right-of-way, which is available for us. And we're very fortunate that we have this available property that we are able to work within. And this is going to, the ultimate improvements are going to entail substantial grading and utility relocations. But we're going to be able to do all of it without having to purchase any additional property. This sketch shows some additional details of how the intersection is going to be transformed. Teller will be fully aligned across the intersection. And that current single lane on Teller is going to now be transformed into a dedicated left turn, a through lane, and a through and right. And in addition, as you leave the intersection heading westbound, there's currently one lane, and now there will be two as a result of the restriping. Also, Lawrence Drive is going to be restripped and realigned to have an additional through lane coming through. So, as you can see in this image, there's more capacity now and better turning movements for everybody. Also, there's going to be some additional new landscaping at the corners a bit to provide for, not only for some intersection improvements, but also for system control.
Yeah, because it doesn't open.
The staff's ready to move forward and widen and improve this key gateway intersection. City Council authorized us to solicit for bids two months ago. And the three bids were received on December, December 1st, 2021, and they're listed here below. Toro Enterprises is the low bidder with a bid in the amount of $1.8 million, which is within 2% of the engineer's estimate. was within 2% of the engineer's estimate. These are strong bids, given the current bid market, and the bid package has been found to be in order with no protests submitted. Here's the summary of the estimated total project costs, including the $238,000 of design fees already expended, plus all of the remaining costs to complete the construction phase in blue for a total of $2.4 million. The $1.18 million appropriation list in the staff report will combine with the $1 million that's already available in the current CIP budget to cover the remaining costs for the construction phase. This general fund appropriation will be coming from the recently set aside surplus in the general fund budget for the Rancho Caneo area. The anticipated timeline, we're here tonight awarding the construction contract. Construction should begin this spring and be concluded one year thereafter. That 12-month project duration factors in some of these long lead items that we're seeing right now for traffic signal pull, cabinets and electrical equipment that are going to be needed for the project. We've performed various outreach efforts, and we've incorporated the input into the project. And also, before and during construction, we'll continue to be doing everything possible to minimize the impacts to the public and to the critical and key adjacent businesses near the intersection. We'll keep that outreach program going, keep everybody informed, and we've got a dedicated project website, tos.org/teller, which we'll continue to update with project details and schedules. The recommendations are in the staff report, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hadari. Councilmembers, do we have any questions for Mr. Hadari on this project? I don't see any hands raised, and I don't think we have any, oh, sorry. Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Thank you. I wasn't sure whether we have any public speakers. If we don't, I would love to move through all of this.
We do not have any public speakers, and if there's no questions from council, we can go with a motion or discussion.
Yes, that was my plan, to make a motion to approve staff recommendation. This is very exciting for the Newberry Park biotech and industrial area and businesses there. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion, and another discussion on the motion from my councilmember colleagues. I would agree with Councilmember Bill De La Peña. This is a project that has been long anticipated and will definitely help traffic flow in that Newberry Park area and the Wendy Drive area and everything. That is well anticipated and well needed, so I would wholeheartedly go along with the motion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries five zero.
Thank you. With that, I believe we've completed Part 10 of our agenda. We do not have any other boards or commissions to talk, but we do have our city manager to give some upcoming issues and announcements.
Thank you so much, Mayor Engler. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on the 25th of this month. We currently have two special presentations pending, one from the Moore Park College, which has launched the new biotechnology program, and the second is for our One City One Book program, the 2022 edition. I have a public hearing on our housing element that was before the Planning Commission last night, and a department report on update from Homeless Ad Hoc Committee in the project home key process. We also are going to have our annual city council committee assignments list brought forward by Mayor Engler. Again, that is the 25th, Tuesday night, the 25th of January for our next city council
Thank you, Mr. Powers. City Attorney Noonan, I believe we do have a closed session if you'd like to announce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one closed session tonight. That is conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.98, Suzanne Rosenthal versus City of Thousand Oaks. It is unlikely I will have anything to report.
Thank you. With that, I would like to adjourn our meeting with two adjournments. The city is, we are adjourning tonight our city council meeting in memory of Sarah Ann Dibbler, who passed away November 16th of 2021. Sarah was a member of the city family, working as a full-time employee for over 12 years. Sarah was born in Pasco, Washington. She went to Fairbanks, Alaska after college graduation and lived there until moving to Oxnard in 1990. She began working for the City of Thousand Oaks in 2007 in the Public Works Department as a landscape maintenance worker. Sarah loved spending time at home with her family and dogs, painting, traveling, and going to the beach. She loved nature, being outside, and spent over 30 years in the horticultural field. She worked at various plant nurseries where she found joy and satisfaction growing various, numerous varieties of plants. She left quite a collection of plants in and around her home, including her favorite staghorn ferns. Sarah was a spirited person, and her family referred to her as a tough cookie, which helped her through her hardest days. All were her fortunate enough to share her company, will always remember her witty, fun-loving nature. Sarah is survived by her husband, Jeff, two children, David and Morgan. She will be deeply missed by her family, her many friends, and by her city coworkers. And our second adjournment is our annual adjournment in memory of Alex Fiori. As our community starts this new year together, we remember one of our city's all-time leaders, Mayor Emeritus Alex Fiori. If ever there was a gentleman who could be legitimately called Mr. Thousand Oaks, it was he. Alex was elected in 1964 as a member of the original city council and retired in 1994 after 30 years of exemplary community service, including six terms as mayor. He was a founding father and major contributor to the city's master plan as the chairman of the Finance Committee. Alex was not content just to have a seat on the council. He was a true leader who was willing to take measured risks for the things he believed in. Every aspect of the community has his touch on it, from the Wildwood Mesa to the malls. Alex was an innovator with extended vision for our ring of public open space, traffic circulation, housing needs, our parks, and even this building. Alex believed in a self-supporting community, a fiscally sound with balanced budget every year, a standard to which the city maintains to this day. During his time off, Alex could be found on most Saturday mornings, sitting at his card table at the Janes Mall. Everyone was welcome to sit there with him, where he would answer questions, listen to concerns, talk about current events, and would help you with your taxes if you asked. His name has been placed to our, his name has been placed to our community baseball fields, affordable housing complex, and on our teen center. Alex Fiori passed away in 2002, having lived a full life. He had a great sense of humor and acquit wit. As a bridge player, Alec achieved the rank of Bronze Life Master, and he loved to travel, play the harmonica and guitar, and was a fan of all sporting goods, sporting events. To his wife, Katie, and her, all his family and friends, Alex remained committed and a leader and had a passion for public service that is an integral part of Thousand Oaks' history and future. We are honored also to have one of our other founding members of our community currently sitting on our council. And if I could call on Ed Jones to say a few words that he, of his time with Alex in the city.
Thank you very much. You've covered some of the things that I was going to mention. That was a very nice description that you gave, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate it. I know he would have appreciated it. At the time of his passing or shortly after, I was writing some columns for The Star, and you've covered some of the things that I was going to say. So if I don't prolong this too much, I would just like to write, to say a few things that you didn't, that in my opinion are also important about Alex. Many things he started here and was instrumental in doing, like the public golf course. He persuaded us to, you know, get it from the Janes Corporation and make it a public golf course. He was active also in the teen center and the senior center that you've mentioned, and also with the, and I worked with him on the transferring the library from the county to the city. And we worked together on a lot of things. We even made a sign together when Sparky Anderson won his second World Series in a different, he started with the National World Series, then he won it in America. So we, Alex and I actually painted a sign and put it up on the bend when you first went onto the 23 freeway. So Alex and I were really buddies, and we did a lot of things together. And the reason we named the football, the, excuse me, the Little League Field for Alex up there on Arvelus right near the, what is now the 23 freeway, was because that our city manager, Glenn Kendall, wanted to put a corporation yard there, put all our, you know, probably first vehicles, tractors and trucks and everything stored there. And we're about to do it, and Alex said, well, wait a minute. That's right next to the residential neighborhood, that we can find a better place than that. Let's turn that over to the Park District and let them do something with it. And that is why we named it Fiori Fields. But I'd like to get into another aspect, and if you don't mind me, and I don't want to prolong this forever, but in this column I wrote on the anniversary of his death a couple of years later, if you would bear with me, I know I'm prolonging this probably too much. Here's what I said, "But what in my opinion was Alex's greater contribution was his spirit, his honesty, his intelligence, his sense of fair play, his love of people, his compassion for the downtrodden, his willingness to stand up for what he believed in, and to give those in need a helping hand." He did, in the days before we had the senior center offering, you know, help with people's income tax, couldn't afford perhaps a taxpayer, he would go and do people's income tax. I was, when I was on the Board of Supervisors, I was also on the Assessment Appeals Board. He came up, drove all the way up there for a widow, because when they first came out with Proposition 13, they didn't make provision for the fact that if your husband died and you were joint owners of the property, that would, that would kick in a new evaluation and a raise in your taxes. And he went all the way up there on his own dime to argue in favor of this change for this widow who had come to him. And I went on to say, "For justice to be done, justice must be perceived to be done. It's not enough for institutions to be in place. There must be flesh and blood human beings at the other end demonstrating their knowledge of and response to the real needs and concerns of the people." And then I point out, as the mayor just said, that he sat every Saturday in the Janes Mall, and I sat with him quite often. When you start a city or any important enterprise, a tone is set, and I really believe this to the bottom of my heart, what I'm about to say. It can be a strong positive tone that is set in a new city, or a vacillating negative tone. It can tell the world that here is an open, bright institution in which honesty and integrity prevail, or a suspect and shady place where bribery and corruption may gain a foothold. There may never have been a city that could have been more vulnerable to the latter tendency than Thousand Oaks, given the desirability of its location for development and its subsequent rapidity of its growth. But there was never a question about the integrity of Thousand Oaks. Projects would be decided on their merit only, others need not apply. Although he perhaps did not realize it and would never have claimed it, I believe it was the integrity of Alex Fiori that was the foundation stone for the integrity that has permeated our entire city family. And in conclusion, I said, "I am proud to have once been a member of that city family and to have been a colleague and friend of Alex Fiori. Leaders of his stature are rare, and when they do appear, it is instructive and profitable to note their careers and to draw inspiration and commitment from them. Alex Fiori was such a leader, and we are all the beneficiaries of his dedication." Thank you.
With those kind and true words, I call this meeting to an adjournment. We will see you in two weeks on January 25th. Thank you.